That's right.
Yeah, yeah, ten packs.
All right, we'll call them in order at seven o'clock with. Two selectmen and Mr. Galloway's excused absence along with the town administrator Lee Comall and Recomend Secretary Helen Allison Valiers. Anyway. I don't know, how are you gonna approve these minutes on the hold of one?
We can wait until next.
Yeah, I can, I can vote on them, I just. That's not a problem.
Make a motion and we accept the minutes for December third, twenty fifteen.
I'll second that. Everything's on like it was when you, you guys are here?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cool. Well, it says seven oh five on the agenda for UK, so I didn't have to wait three minutes.
We just get to wait.
Don't go too fast, alright?
I'll tell.
You want those? Ted, you're it.
Okay, my name's Katie McDonald and I'm representing the Library Board of Trustees, just to give you just an update on a couple, uh, two things in particular. The first is this following up on, I think it was a couple of months ago, we talked at length at this meeting about memory and understanding, about upkeep of the physical plant for the library. And we certainly want to stay on top of that and I think at the time there was an idea that there would be probably beginning in the fall, a meeting where the library, members of Library Trustees and members of the Board of Selectmen of the town would come together and hash out what, what we're supposed to take care of in terms of physical upkeep and what the town's supposed to take care of. So, we're very interested in setting a date for that. Number one. And you know, I spoke to me about this the other day. We had a smoke and fire detector system that was non-functional. So, we're really concerned about that because it's a safety issue, obviously. So, message sent, okay? We're very concerned.
Well, we've already approved the, to be done.
Yep, and I clarified it with Rick. I did get on the phone with him and returned my call.
Ladies, it's a misunderstanding with the vendor.
Right, and that's fine. So, we're, that's, that looks like that's on its way, but the longer term issue is the, is the general understanding, general understanding about upkeep. Exactly, just to advise you that on this, this weekend, at the, at Old Home Day, were, you know, some members of the Library Trustee Board and also Andrea Douglas have been very active in putting together two hundred and fiftieth anniversary book. One of those books went into a tiny capsule. And we're very, very proud of it and just to let you know that that's, we're gonna be promoting it and encourage everybody to take a look at it.
Well, thank you for putting one in a tin capsule.
Yeah, that was a.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that was a, did, did that go in the ground already?
No, no, no.
There it is.
We actually don't put it in the ground, we put it in the vault. It gets put on the very top shelf and it's locked and the key is taken away and it says do not open.
That's great.
With, till a certain year.
I think this would be wonderful, February twenty five or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Great. Okay.
Other than that, is the library gonna be open for the, this weekend?
Yes, and it is going to be open the entire, up until what, three or four in the afternoon.
Does that know, what quarter party's up there?
Yeah, they're being delivered and set up right here tomorrow.
Because I know that most of people may need to use the facilities and such, so just.
Yeah, that.
You're only open on Saturday or you open Sunday as well?
No, not Su- not Sunday, just Saturday, yeah. Yeah, and, and all, all of the contributions to the book, even those that did not make it into the book are going to be on display. So, it's a real inclusive.
Okay. Can I just bring up what I shared with you regarding the inspection?
Yep.
Our, our air conditioner was down this week, so I called in for a repairman to look at it and he mistakenly thought it was that building. So, he went over there and inspected that compressor and then realized that he was at the wrong place, so he came over here. But, he did update me with the fact that the placement of that air conditioner is not in the best place that it can be.
Tom mentioned that too.
For the reason that the, the vines and growth are, are just getting into it, it's gotta be raised off the ground and then it'll also be a problem with the use of the heater, whereas if the snow covers that, then it's gonna be problematic. So, he got here and saw that ours were off the ground, he was glad to see this, he just had some advice and recommendations from this to go on to work better.
Yeah, Tom Casano was mentioning that when they were here with the garden club and such.
So, that's something we can, we should look at for budgeting and.
When we had the, when we had the, the meeting, when we started out there walking around, didn't we discuss that as well? Memory service.
That we mentioned.
So, I'm gonna plug it into the two thousand sixteen maintenance budget.
Not to lift that one up?
To lift that or do something with it.
What can we get next to home? If it's not too much, I'd probably wanna do it sooner than later.
Okay.
If it's, if we have the one, unless you have any objection.
Okay, alright, then I'll do that.
I mean, I don't hate to wait and then also next year have something go wrong and we should have done it sooner.
Well, we're on it tomorrow.
Okay.
Work it a fair amount.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Good night.
Stay dry.
Thanks.
Library roof RFP. This one's in the packet here.
Yep.
I have to be honest, I haven't really read a whole lot of my email, like, glance over them, but I have not got dug into the.
Okay.
Attachments and stuff. Been a little preoccupied.
Yeah, I know. Basically, what you have before you is almost identical to the RFP or the slate roof material. The big changes obviously would be page seven, where the material size, color and thickness, I added a range based on the recommendation from the board last weekend, last week, to allow for the different sizes because what I found with all my specs is that one style was five feet wide by nine inches high and the next one was narrower by higher. So, by allowing a size range to be between thirty-nine and fifty with a minimum height of eight, we would get the product that they're able to provide for us and then make a decision based on the manufacturer or the sample.
Thing I notice right here says, gauge should be minimum twenty-six gauge or higher.
Yeah, they range between twenty-six and twenty-nine. The ra- the range isn't here.
The lower the number, the thicker the metal.
Oh, is that the way it is?
Yes. So, depending on how they interpret that, we could end up with some real paid within stuff.
Oh, okay. Well, then you explain the spec. Here, this one, this sample Metro says it is twenty-eight gauge. A twenty-six. And then this one, which is Century, says that it is twenty-nine gauge. Is this thinner?
It's a thinner metal, yep.
And then.
I prefer a thicker metal, I mean.
Right. And then this one here says twenty-eight. So, how do you want that to be? Should it be?
Well, because if it's to be a minimum of twenty-six gauge.
You just leave it at that?
That means it, it only limits at the twenty-six gauge, we're not gonna go with anything thinner, so I mean.
Okay, and minimum is the thickest?
Yeah, the smaller the number, the thicker the metal. So, but what you say to be a minimum of twenty-six gauge, that means it can't be any, any lighter, any thinner.
Okay, so then I think if I understand you right, then I need to have the higher number there.
If that's what we want.
If that's what you want.
Make it available so they can have a range of options.
Twenty-six is the thickest, so I would have to do, use a twenty-nine and a twenty-eight.
So, you gotta say minimum twenty-nine gauge or, or thicker, or I would go with something like say, or a thicker gauge or something like that, because when you say higher, it's just.
Or thicker?
Heavier.
Heavier gauge, yep, yep.
Or heavier, okay.
Yes, heavier gauge, thanks.
So, you have minimum twenty-six gauge or lower?
Well, if they don't make anything, if they don't make anything.
Because the number actually increases, the number gets higher, but it's actually a thinner gauge.
But does it go below twenty-six gauge?
Yeah, maybe, I don't know.
I don't know, but the ones that I've been looking at, a lot of them are in this range. So, if we go a minimum of twenty-nine or thick or heavier, I think that's something's going through.
Do, I don't feel a twenty-nine gauge, twenty-nine, twenty-eight, there's a whole lot of difference.
Well, see, the thing is, I, when I, I'm not experienced enough just to be able to look at this piece of metal and say, will that fit and work for the size that we're looking?
I'm sure it will.
Because this one's fourteen inches, whereas this one is twenty-six and it's only nine and three quarters. And then this one is completely different, it's fifty wide by eight and point three.
Like I feel is that any of those metals will work, the question is what are we gonna get for a pattern and does it look natural?
Right, well, what I did is I eliminated the ones that look like, you know, the.
I don't mean some, if you wanna jump in here, if you're, because I'm not a roofing expert either, so.
There's a dectra shingle that looks like cobblestone, then there's a cottage, which I'm not gonna consider, and then a Metro, so I didn't think this looked like slate. So, I went into the different descriptions and looked at their specs behind scenes to try to get a better idea of what would work for the language on the RFP here. So, without having the experience of, I mean, just learning the gauge, the lower the number, the thicker, the higher, the thinner, I. I have, I have an extra one here and I know that you've helped me out with some of the information.
I think if you're, I, I, without looking at all of this, if your pieces are wider, you're gonna have more waste because you're cutting both sides, your hips.
Cutting the hips, yeah.
So, you're gonna have a lot more waste, it's been wa- the bigger the piece, not the longer the piece, the higher the piece is, you're gonna be cutting that whole chunk and throwing that away. Yeah, that's what's gonna happen.
I don't know what's gonna work, yeah. So, well, they're gonna have to give us the number of square that they need to do a job.
Right, 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 I understand, yeah, I'm just letting you, you know, for, for your own.
I hear what you're saying, but I'm, I'm trying to think, because remember when I did my metal roof, oh god, was it twelve, fifteen years ago? When I had the hip roof on my porch on the backside, I cut a piece off over here, I used it on the other side.
Yeah, but is your, was there a pattern to yours?
Well, just straight, you know.
Yeah, so it's my point, you've got a pattern in there.
Right, so I mean, the patterns may still work, I mean, because if, well, if you go on even.
Now, that is a rule.
If you're going up even, I mean, you know, they gotta match all the way around, you know, the perimeter. So, I mean, it's quite possible you might, I'm sure you're gonna get some waste, but I mean, I would.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm not saying you can't use all of it, all I'm saying is you're gonna end up more, more waste the higher the pieces. You're gonna be chopping that chunk off, whereas if it's narrower, you'll be cutting the piece off, but it's gonna be a smaller piece, you know? But yeah, you're going by.
Aren't you gonna need more square to cover the same area though?
Excuse me?
Don't you need more of the product to cover the same area?
That's what's gonna happen, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay.
I mean, again, you're gonna get a price of that, right, you know, just so you understand what, what happens with that, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And the other thing is when they bid to you, you're gonna get a sample, I would imagine, for what it looks like. And I showed Lane one picture, one of them looks like they're separate tiles. The other one looks like that tile is separate and then it's slightly indented, so you'll be able to look at the bids and the more defined the profile of the tile is, it's slightly more expensive and that might be a difference in the cost, but that might be the product you want, so.
That's why we want a sample.
It's, it's real hard to say, you know, this is a type, without having a manufacturer, and I said that before, without having a manufacturer with a specific tile that they're gonna bid on, they're all over the place, so you won't know till you get a price in.
Right, right, so, that's where I'm trying to be consistent with the other RFP. And then the the other big change is on page eight, I have highlighted, I inserted the slate page eight because the paragraph doesn't apply, so I removed the entire, the whole paragraph and said, all metal slate will be installed to manufacturer specifications, because this one here goes into detail of field slate will be installed, three-inch head, labs, following chalk lines marking top edge. I don't know that I have. This is, should be included, I mean, this also covers everything that's here. Can you see the difference? It just doesn't apply to metal. Yeah, so instead of removing the, the whole paragraph, I just left the metal slate shall project one point five inch at ease, and yet that may not be correct, they may correct me. All metal slates will be installed to manufacturer specifications. I hope that was, and then nothing else changed, except for the wording, then it's metal slate throughout, whereas this is slate. And by removing that section, which is a substantial paragraph, I just wanted to say consistent, so at the bottom of the page is a bigger space, so that section, exhibit C is on the same, same, identical format. So, nothing else has changed.
It's just formatting, it's nothing.
Yep, yep.
Is there a, for a go or an go-go time, or does it give us a chance to read it and then?
I think I'm ready for a go, because it's identical to the slate. Like I said, today was the, oh, the sixth pass where I had both up on the screen, side by side. And again, once I printed it, I realized that the, well, this footer is gonna come out, but I noticed that it said file and it said slate, which is incorrect. I just think we need to get it in the newspaper, we need to get it up on the, you know, the website and get it out there and try to get some bids in here. I did contact the, another company, another line of metal, which is Arrowline Metal Slate Roofing, because Bob had brought me the specs in, which I did have in my packets, but he asked me to bring to the board's attention the consideration of lifetime non-pro rated warranty. So, I contacted this Arrowline, come to find out they're just a distributor, so they gave me Edco, which is the manufacturer. And when I talked to them, I asked, this, this says it's only available in southern states. And I asked, is this available in the northern New England? And he said, he, he gave me a rep's name from New York who covers the eastern area. And then we talked a little bit about the building that we were working on and when I mentioned it was a government building, he said, this lifetime non-pro rated does not apply to commercial or government.
Of course.
And it would have a fifty-year prorated for not, for commercial. So, it's something that I, we need to look at, if someone presents something that says lifetime non-prorated and this is what they're giving us in a bid, at least I have the inside scoop that I need to contact the company to make sure.
Oh, and they physically put they onto it, or if it's.
But, but what's the likelihood of the installer being around to be able to cover what he says the product.
Oh, I understand, yeah, I'll clarify.
But it was just interesting to hear that this.
No, it's always definitely a good consideration, whether you're commercial or government.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think they're probably in line for manufacturer as the other lines that I had originally here that they show.
Well, we need specific dates of where, if we, if we, this, like, this.
Well, I think I need to.
Maybe suggest.
I, I, if I got it in the paper for next week.
Oh, we got the bid opening date, we've got the mandatory walkthrough date, and we also have the date that they have to get it in to us to reopen it.
Yeah.
So, those are three dates. And we have that date too, which is the same as on the front of it, but.
Right.
So, so we have three specific dates we need to take and determine.
One, two, three, there's three full weeks, almost three, four weeks left in September. So, if I put this out in the paper and on websites and everywhere else, work on that tomorrow to get it in the paper in this area here, one, two. This would be.
Well, we don't have a walkthrough.
Well, this, this is where I'm asking for your input, do we wanna work on a evening of a select?
When's it gonna, when do you think it'll be going out, I guess?
I know I can get it in the paper from Monday.
Yeah, and the website and everything else that goes on.
That'll go in tomorrow, I'll get it done before the end of tomorrow. It's two weeks for them to receive the, I think.
That would give them probably like.
For a walkthrough?
You know, honestly, I'd probably get beginning of this week here, because this way, if it goes out on the website there and paper there, it gives them a week to get the stuff, to look at the paperwork, kinda get there.
That's enough time for them?
Oh, yeah, I mean, because they gotta come and do the mandatory walkthrough, then, then I would say whatever, you know, if the walkthrough is on like a Monday or Tuesday, and then give them, you know, another, you know, week and a half or so after that to find out who's the other.
What, what date was the walkthrough?
Pardon?
He's considering Mon- Monday the twenty-first or Tuesday the twenty-second.
I think get it done as soon as we can, we give them a little over a week so they can digest all this stuff, they get questions, they can call, whatever, but then they show up and, you know, that's the walkthrough. Everybody and their brother.
And then give them one, two weeks and have them due in for the seventh, for opening on the eighth.
That sounds reasonable.
Then we'll have to have a public hearing, we have to give fourteen days' notice on that. How do you feel, Ted? Walkthrough on the twenty-first, Monday or Tuesday better for you?
Oh, let me see, can you?
Twenty.
Morning and afternoon?
I would say probably in the afternoon, wouldn't I?
Yeah, I think you did that with the fire department, how did that work? Were you there for the walkthrough?
Well, well.
Monday at the open afternoon time.
Okay, so.
And on the Tuesday, we went to two, three in the afternoon.
That's what I do for Monday afternoon, the twenty-first.
We're gonna do four thirty?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock?
Yeah. That way, because they'll get here early, they'll scope the building out and then at four o'clock, we can.
Okay, and then if you give this one week, two weeks. And then the bids have to be in by the seventh.
Well, because as I do that here, so.
This is one week, this is two weeks. Bids due back in by the seventh, that'll give them two weeks and a few days, and then we'll open them on the eighth.
That's fine. I don't know if they need it for two weeks, but.
I don't know, you tell me. I'm just thinking if they're, if, if roofers are really busy right now, will we be get, you know, giving them enough time to get in here?
Damn if we do, damn if we don't, I mean, if we did this, you know, went out to bid in January, I'm sure it had everybody and their brother here trudging through the snow. Because they're not, not too busy with it, yeah.
Okay, so it'll be October, eighth.
On Tuesday, well, you have it down here Tuesday, so, would that be Tuesday the sixth or Wednesday the seventh? Now, the, when the bid's gonna be back, on page eleven.
Okay, I'll change it.
To what, Wednesday?
Wednesday at three.
So, on October fifteen, twenty-one, September. Four o'clock. No, that's not. You okay with it?
Oh, yeah, we will.
Oh, it's good.
Okay, Wednesday, three P M, October seventh, open eighth at seven fifteen. And then that'll allow us to do, to announce.
They have seven thirty up here, in the front.
Okay.
Just gotta be consistent, I don't care whether it's seven fifteen, seven thirty, we just be consistent. So, we don't get ourselves in trouble.
Why don't we do seven fifteen?
I'm good with a either or, either.
Because we can always do it later, but we can't do it earlier, right? Right, so I'll put those two out on the major main website, the town website, get out the paper for Monday. We have that. That is all came there.
So, walkthrough on twenty-first.
Yeah.
At four. Bids due seven, October at three o'clock. Bids open eight, October at seven fifteen.
Yeah.
That looks like that.
Okay, I'll work on that, that would be nice, then I'll back off my desk, maybe I go on vacation next week.
Demand. It's emergency. Anything else? Garden of the Roof?
Nope.
Alright, I'll go through my walkthroughs right here. Health care and health stress, on the red side. And surplus returns, I don't know if something might be interesting going on. The one posted first is the twenty-ninth, September.
That might be one I can go to, too.
What time is it?
I don't know.
Five P M.
On the twenty-ninth, right?
Oh, what date is that, is that a?
You got the calendar, I don't know.
Twenty-ninth is a Tuesday, okay. September, right, twenty-ninth?
Yep, Edgar Pony Car from Sire.
I can, I can go to that. Can I take that?
Oh.
Just so I.
I'm just gonna put it on the pilot, it's gonna get back to you anyway.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I get it.
Alrighty, next we have a proposal for new doors, bolt, again, two, right, you have two hundred doors. Security hinges, pushbars, keypads, knobs, ten keys, and paint the door. Five thousand eight hundred and forty-seven rolls. You guys do anything with that last week? You didn't do anything about doors, so.
We put them to get prices.
Get the prices, sorry.
Four thousand seven hundred.
Four thousand eight hundred and forty-seven. That's for, yep, that's for, let's see, six panel slates, steel door, two of them, security hinges, pushbar, all of this stuff.
And that's also changing the back door to key alike with the front doors.
Okay, that's, that's good to know.
Yeah.
So, that's what it looks like, that's neat. So, as I understand it, we'll, everybody can have an access code, we can just.
Yep, we can change it, we can walk it, I think it's what, three hundred codes?
Yeah.
Overimbable and.
Well, a hundred and then the.
A hundred.
Expandable to three hundred.
Yeah, and then if it works out well, then we can consider it part of the other town buildings, it would be easier to do the same for the other ones.
I don't know, you get a chance to look at that?
Yeah.
I'll let you. Alright, so we need a motion to go forth. I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal, get those doors fixed so we can get locked out of our own building. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Are you gonna key this one too as well? There, there is no key on this one, right?
No.
That's just a nerd's.
No, it's the two over here.
Two in the back, behind.
In the back, yep.
Pretty nice. Yeah, I know, I don't know how many times coming here recently and the door, the body, they're just kinda hanging off to one side.
Those mechanisms, I think the doors will replace once and use the same hardware and then the pressure things, they really don't work well if you're, they kinda slam behind you. So, they've lost all that pressure that stops the door from closing on people, so it's been a long time.
Cool. It's getting worn out like the rest of us. Alright, we got an email here from Amy Smogulow. From DES, we got, we got invasive aquatic plant control projects. I had the glasses coming, so I should be able to read a little better here. It's not quite as blurry. Hello, it's time to start thinking ahead to twenty sixteen invasive aquatic plant control projects and working to secure grant funds for these projects. Deadline is September fifteenth.
It's primarily.
No foil.
Yeah, applying to be put in the queue for the grants, it doesn't mean that we'll get it. Yeah, applying to be put in the queue for the grants. It doesn't mean that we'll get it, but in order to be considered, we have to fill out this form, which puts us in the queue.
Lou DeBirio, Jamie Derrin, Sire, season twenty sixteen, public, growing pond, I don't know, surrounding links, horizontal trenches. Okay, exactly. Of course, we see. What about this aquatic plant control grant application, infestation of shared information? That hasn't been filled out, is that something that Lou has to do or?
She has to fill it out, she, Amy will fill it out.
Oh, she'll fill this part out?
Yep, yep, cause she knows the plants and the, what was collected and has the final report.
Gotcha. Alrighty, let's see, you, any thoughts?
Oh, I'm finding it.
Okay.
It's not binding us to anything.
No.
It's putting us in a queue.
Right, so hopefully we get some free money, but we have to match it so it's not so free. Alrighty, any motion for this? I didn't think so. Alright, I didn't think so either, though. Oh, sorry, Simon, great. You need this, uh, some of the?
No, that's okay.
Okay, we have the toll. Toll, license, how much a year? License petition. Our interest, somebody telephone?
It's the same, one poll request, but it's three copies, they need three copies, so.
Gotcha. Alright, so. Looks like some insurance, some, uh, blah, 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 that's all. Okay, what is it? Okay, Barn Hill Road. So, where's the pole? Oh, they're gonna remove that one. Right? And install it there.
They did place a call with Jeff to make sure that he got a chance to look at that before they install it, so that he didn't. And they're, um, make correct conditions or find that it's bad for the highway department.
Gotcha, so I assume this must be pulled across the street that's turning wiring, hold that pole in place, and then it's just gonna go to that one. So, if he signs tonight and, and Jeff is not in favor of putting it there, or it works for him, then what?
I asked him to.
He probably already did it.
Yeah, probably.
That's what he, his argument has been, is that by the time we receive them, they've already done the work, so I can hold the application, cause there is a, one of those has to go to the state, I believe. So, if he comes in tomorrow, which he will, cause he got my message.
Unless that's in there.
Yeah, could be, um, then I could ask him to.
Well, that would've taken suggestive motion to table us until next week, until we know for certain Jeff is good with us.
Yeah, it's fine.
I don't have a problem signing it, I mean.
Yep.
I'm only sure he's good with it, cause he's one's gotta live with it.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
I'm gonna table the full license petition for that, not on Barn Hill.
Your second, Tim.
Yeah.
Your second.
Tom and.
Tom.
All those in favor, table on the full license? Aye. Uh, we got employment law group, uh, folks, invite us to a twenty fifteen employment loss seminar, cost seventy five bucks per person. So, when, is it, Thursday, September seventeenth, Micro Pony. Uh, seven forty-five to one thirty.
Is that true?
No. I don't think there's anything we also can. Sorry? Yeah.
I'm on vacation. Two days after my big wedding, not mine, my dogs.
Health trusts, okay. We're changing the health trust folks, huh? Health trust board directors and staff review plans for our services and insurance. We'd like to tell you about some important updates. The medical prescription plan, so, this is. This is our medical insurance, right? I don't know which ones we have for.
I think it's a ten, twenty, forty-five.
They actually have a number to them.
Yep. I can always invite them in to talk to the board.
Yeah, or can we get a synopsis since you?
What do they think?
They're changing things around with prescriptions and such, fires.
Supposed to help in cost savings.
Right.
There's a.
For us or for every, for the employees too?
I think it's, I think it's for the, from the sound of it, it, it sounds like it's gonna increase for us, but then it, it goes down in some small areas, so.
Like, I glanced over and read it, then I was aware of it, but I didn't dig into the, this part here, cause I wasn't sure which plans we, we have from. I thought we had a myriad of plans, different ones use different ones.
No, we, one, one group.
Everybody uses the same plan?
Yes, correct.
Cause I know at one time, we had old employees that were using under one plan and some of them was also.
Yeah, we don't do that anymore.
Good, keep it simple.
Same with the, um, retirement plan. At one point, cause of the contract, the police chief that was retired, we had to have two plans, uh, and then we only got one for one.
Maybe I should get a synopsis somewhere, if you can somehow, whether they do it for us or, you know.
Yep.
What our current plan is, what these changes are gonna, they can do for us and to the employees, so we can give everybody a fair warning. Or if we have to make a decision on change to something else that might be better for everybody, I don't know. Yeah, we got a couple different plans on this thing, so I'm not sure which one to use.
I didn't, okay, I think it was addressed to you, I think.
Yeah, right.
I've, I've got an email on it, but it's not as detailed as that. I'll write some more information back.
Appreciate that. We got another one, a lot of here from American Red Cross. Hmm, it says request for the town of Dunbaron to, uh, contribute one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-two cents to Red Cross.
One thousand.
This is something new.
Yeah, I didn't see that get put in there. We don't typically donate to your loss, let's say.
We accept this letter as requests for funds from the town of Dunbaron for the upcoming fiscal year in the amount of one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Goes off to say, you know, that they help out disaster, natural disasters and man-made disasters. Twenty-four, seven through sixty-five, blah, blah, blah.
I think we already have one organization that we contribute to.
Yep.
It's the Meals and Meals and.
Merrimack County responses, July first, twenty-fourteenth through June thirtieth, twenty fifteen, um. They respond to nineteen incidents and served a hundred and fifteen other individuals in Merrimack County. Bowe, Concord, East Endover Franklin, Hattler Hook's Out Loud, and Northfield Pittsfield Webster. I don't see Dunbaron anywhere there. Right. So, we've never donated to them before, haven't we?
Uh-uh.
We donate for the cap, community action.
The action program, right, and we also give the, um, Soviet Army.
Yep, it does the funding, what, this is our budget, yep.
As much as, as nice as it would be, I mean, I don't know. I can. Only stick with our status quo, you, you. We're gonna forego this one.
Yep.
Nothing like, put your John Hancock on that. I think that's about it, except for the F lock, and it looks like it's on the agenda for the twenty-fourth.
Correct, we wanted the whole board here to, uh, explain what this service offers. And it's offered to full-time and part-time employees.
Actually have it through the State Boys Association.
Yep.
I've used it a few times, comes in handy. Alright, nothing else in the walkthrough, that's good.
We've gone over everything that I had to discuss, except for one thing, I just wanted to update you with the, um, tax rate setting in the Department of Revenue. They received all, uh, the required documents, um, so we're just waiting, um, for the pending review in the queue or the financial, which was received, uh, submitted from the auditor, the, uh, revenues, which we submitted last week, and then the assessment review, which is, uh, signed by the board of assessors. And I had two of the board come in yesterday, so all those pieces have been submitted, and now we're just waiting for that final review. And once they are completed, we'll get, uh, receive an email confirmation for a preliminary tax rate, and then we can discuss it further. So, just keep an eye open for that.
Are you gonna give us a draft of the, uh, MS one?
Yep, I have that, uh, the board of assessors have to sign it and put it, so I'll have that show you after next week.
Alright.
Scott and I went through that, so we're good.
Alright. And if memory serves, we went down a few million in value, right?
Yep, final numbers came in, Scott was in here yesterday. Was he here Tuesday, Allison Scott Marsh, was that yesterday?
I don't know, it's so hot in the yard, you know.
Yes, um.
I think he came in about.
He has it made Tuesday, right? Yeah, it was here.
Yes, that's true, yeah, and the cool down, yeah.
But, I didn't, I didn't turn the information on, but, uh, we've lost just over ten million, about ten point five million over last year's assessment. Our last statistical, we lost thirty-seven million, so it's not as drastic as the last time, but it seems to put us right back to that point where we started.
Backed on a little bit. Wonderful. I saw you guys, the revenues came in a little higher, you guys could come and look at the, uh, the tax rate.
Oh, one other thing, in the minutes, it said that Dan Scoop was supposed to be attending tonight's meeting, he said he had nothing to report to you tonight, that he would be coming in next Thursday, this year.
I'm sure he's gonna have suggestions and, I just don't wanna wait that last minute.
Yeah, no, he's on the agenda for next Thursday.
Yeah, I, I saw him the other day, for something else, and he mentioned that, uh, he's having a hard time getting ahold of focuses and getting back to him regarding some of the, the detailed questions that he's asking, so he's hoping to nail some of those down. That would be good, cause I know I had a few for him, and he couldn't answer me either. Anyway, anything else?
Um.
Since we're on the table, okay, I was, uh, Strawberry Festival in Bow, a mo- couple of months ago, and I grabbed this and I finally found it again. It's a community action program from Dunbaron, Merrimack County speaking, cap, and, uh, it's a whole lot of stuff in here. I was just wondering if it may be worthwhile for us to kinda put this information on our, on our website somewhere for people. It's got everything in here, I mean, energy utilities, housing, homeless, elderly housing, nutrition, hunger, children's and families, all that.
I'm sure they have something electronically that they can give me, that I can post.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I didn't know, you know, just, it's good information for residents and stuff like that, I don't know, like it's an information page, or even put on the welfare person's page.
Yep.
I don't know if she even has one.
Yes, she does, she has one.
I thought she did.
I think she does.
I have.
If not, I'll create one. Yes, I could do that. I'll contact them and, you know, someone that we can talk to regularly.
Yeah, just try to help, uh, get the information out to our residents in case someone out there needs it. Never, never know, so. Um, the other thing I had, which I just pulled this packer out, I think, so it's getting to a full here, was Kelsey Road. I see we had a petition last week. Yeah, and then I know we contacted the town attorney, did he ever get back to us?
He did, and.
Oh, thanks, I didn't see the response. I did check my email.
I didn't want, I didn't want to put it in there, and he sent your email.
Oh, it is, I mean, I did.
Do you wanna read it first, because it's.
Well, I mean, you said.
It's confidential.
Right, but I mean, you did respond.
All three of them.
Okay, great, and sent it.
And it's, he's got their recommended, uh, language to use and how to go through the process.
Great, that's why I just wanna make sure we don't drop that, cause I wanna get people on that.
No, yep, yep.
If one just comes.
And I think it will, it's actually good that you have it in your email inbox and you can read it, because next week, Mike Gundy's coming in with a surveyor.
Okay.
So, so the things that he has noted in that email, you might be able to answer questions, and then what he, the surveyor has to provide, you might answer some questions that you have, so.
Okay.
If it goes well, if you just.
Yeah, I didn't know, I didn't know if he had gotten back to us, uh, like I said, I'm preoccupied, so I didn't take and, uh, read my email recently, so.
Yeah, I, I printed it off and played it, uh, a holder.
Hopefully I'll get back to that very soon. That's all I had on my agenda. You, sir? Wait, anything as a transfer station, or good? Anything that's not transfer station related?
Getting ready for the two-fiftieth, all twelve day this weekend, two days.
Yeah?
With your recycling bins and all the good stuff.
Yeah, I just dropped them off. I dropped them off this afternoon. Great, thank you. Yeah, you probably won't have a whole lot of business on Saturday, I think.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I happened to be going through the minutes and, uh, there was a tree that got hit by lightning here.
Right, yeah, by the front cemetery.
And it's gonna be taken down this fall? What's going on with the wood?
That's the trustees, um, I guess as a trustee, would you answer that question, or is that a highway related? So, let's say highway, it's in the cemetery right of way.
It's on the, yeah, I mean, we don't really own outside the fence, per se, we just can't let anybody dig outside the fence, twenty-five feet.
Okay. Okay.
But the tree doesn't belong to us, it's a cemetery. I believe we as a group, when we were doing our walkthrough, that we took a look at it, and it, it took a, a heavy hit.
Yeah.
But we don't wanna take it down and have an ice war during the, you know, two-fiftieth celebration and stuff, so we figured later this fall, take it down.
Before fall.
So, what's going on with the wood?
I would.
Are you gonna post that online or?
Honestly, I haven't gave it a thought, I don't know, I'm working on the best.
Yeah, I know, I had thought about it, yeah.
I know, in the past, they've taken it to the recycling center, and people could take it. Or they would put it on, let the locals know it was gonna be available, and then whoever spoke up first, you know, they kinda shit, tried to share it with people, that's all it did, you know.
That's a lot of wood there.
Yeah, well, that's my point, though, some people could use it, you know, I brought wood, so.
I could use it, but I mean, I wouldn't take it, cause it just would be a bad perception.
Yeah, but, you know what I'm saying, it's, like, I looked at the website, and it, there wasn't posted on the website, so I said, I wonder if, you know.
No. We haven't even talked to the, the road agent about it, I think he comes close to us, so.
I think we mentioned it, but I think we, yeah, yeah.
I, I, and I don't even know what tree it is, I don't even know if it's a value or.
It's two over.
Yeah.
You can't miss it.
Yeah, it's kinda like in the middle, it's before the fence, I mean, before the gate.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good sized one. But, uh, if you look up in, and you go right by, um, if you're facing north and you look up at it, I mean, you can see where the bark ended, it just came right out of, you know, off of it, and it's just, it's split open.
Too bad to lose it, huh?
Yeah. Well, we didn't lose only the tree, we also lost a lot of computer equipment in here.
Yeah, right, I heard about that too, yeah, I saw that where.
Been busy.
That's what you gotta do, you gotta sell the wood, so you can pay for the computer equipment and all the labor.
Deductible, yeah?
Pretty deductible.
Yeah, it's a thousand dollar deductible for that claim, so.
I don't know if there's a thousand dollars of wood in there, do you? So, well, I don't know, we can, uh, check with Jeff and what the usual protocol is, I do not know what it is off the top of my head, like, you know.
Well, I, I do know in the past, when they've done.
Right.
Cemetery trustees had, or even in the center here, they brought it to the, to the transfer station, and people would just, you know, take it from there, you know, but. I don't know, you guys, I, like I said, I just happened to look on, on your website to see if it was posted, and it wasn't, so I said, I didn't know what was going on with it.
Yeah.
I did know the tree got hit, I didn't see which one it was.
I don't know if that's technically in the state right of way, I don't know if that, if it's just, if it's just outside the right of way, or it's just inside the right of way. If you play your cards right, you might be able to get the D O two, take it down.
I know.
I doubt it too.
Yeah.
I know those guys, they're cheap.
Yeah, the state's looking for money too, so.
Oh, yeah. Can't get them to fix the roads.
Oh, yeah, they did a good job on mine, yeah, let me see.
Okay, alright, yeah, no, I'm sorry, that's it.
Robert.
That's it, that's it.
Anyone else going once?
I got something.
Okay, awesome, yeah.
We've got to get this time capsule ready for Saturday, because we're on the schedule to put it in, so.
Oh, yes.
I put together a list of things, and maybe we can, you guys can add something. And I'll read it, so anybody else. And I'll read it, so anybody else can chip in. There's a picture of the present selectman, the four past selectmen, which is taken at the August ninth lawn party band concert, and I put names on them, so fifty years from now, they'll know who they are. Dunbar's two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary town report, the town flag, three by five, a small town flag, four by six inches. Program for the two-hundred-fifty anniversary celebration held on Sunday, August ninth. Two-hundred-fifty commemorative coin gold, two-hundred-fifty commemorative coin silver. Three sunclass, sun catchers, blue, green, and amber, the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary mug. Two-hundred-fifty calendar events for the year to fifteen, child's two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary tee-shirt. A list of the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary, and the Beverly, which we. We sold, Gostown News with the article about the Sunday lawn party concert. Card to all residents regarding the lawn party, which is sent out. Um, Dunbar's two-fiftieth, misses the book from the library.
Yep.
Literally in visual celebration. And I'm gonna get a Time magazine. That's about the only thing I had to think of.
I thought we were gonna put a calendar in.
We got the calendar in. I said two-fifty calendar, yeah. Dunbar's school reunion, September thirteenth, the commemorative button in the program. And I talked to Shelley Westenberg, and she's gonna donate a piece of Jerry Williams pottery, which I haven't got yet. But anything else we can put in there, we're open to suggestions.
Open the floor to everybody on this one.
Yeah, we'll all be gone when it's time to open it.
That's why, that's why I credit, cause somebody's gonna find out.
Well, some of you will be gone.
And I don't know whether it's gonna be open in twenty-five years now, which would be two thousand sixty-five, and I won't be around. Or two thousand forty, for the two-hundred-seventy-fifth, I will be around. So I don't know what else we want to do.
I'm a total, too mean to die, I'll be here.
The last time this was open was twenty-five years ago, or fifty years ago?
Well, what they did is they started one in sixty-five, and they left the stuff in there, it was in some other kind of a box, and then, and.
Bicentennial.
Bicentennial, they did that box, and they put the stuff from sixty-five in it.
Okay.
And then they put the stuff from the bicentennial in it, so we're just leaving that other stuff.
Like I said, is this gonna be an open in twenty-five years, or open in fifty years?
Whatever the people decide, I don't know, like, for some reason, they had one, the two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth.
Right, so there was some, twenty-five years ago, some items that you read off, everyone was confused with what you were.
Yeah, no, they were confused, and so was I, because there was, there was a combination of nineteen sixty-five and nineteen seventy-six.
Right.
But there was, there was no two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth time capsule.
It was a bicentennial, they didn't do any two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth capsule.
I'd say do not open for fifty years, and they get a three-hundred.
Right.
Yeah, twenty-five years, it's, I mean, it's all, all the time.
Evidently, they just took the stuff from sixty-five and put this other stuff on top of it.
Just co-mingled it all.
They just co-mingled the whole thing.
Oh, come on, tell us all at once, don't keep to yourself.
Share the best. Let's have some.
You have to share your humor, there you go.
I think that's enough, I think you probably want leaves and space for the next.
Yeah, we're gonna use the same box, the box, the great box, there's a little history of it in the, in the box, some, somebody, you know, lived here, made it, and he did all this painting on it.
So all the pieces of stuff that came out of it, you're putting it back in from your, yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know what else to do, though.
Well, no, I mean, I think that's, you know, a good idea, that way you just keep passing it forward, so that they can see it as well.
Yeah, that's what they did for the past two weekends.
Yeah, so.
Is there a way you can put that together, so that way the sixty-five is with sixty-five, and seventy-six is with seventy-six? Or is it just?
Maybe you get some Ziploc bags or something like that, just kinda segregate it.
Well, you have the, um.
Well, they had it all mixed up in there.
Yeah, right, that's what I mean, though, you know, so then it gets kinda like, a lot of the stuff will get, meaning will get lost and all that.
I could put a barrier for our stuff.
Well, if you actually.
I've got a list, I mean a list of everything that was in it. But they never did that before.
Right.
Well, we're learning.
We're getting better, we're getting older.
Two hundred years to learn.
Sometimes it takes that long. We still make the same mistakes all the time, too, so.
That is true.
I don't know if you want, last time they put an electric bill in, a telephone bill, and so one of them.
I got one.
Yeah. I don't know. I suppose, I mean, I don't know.
Doesn't make any difference. But I have till two o'clock Saturday, cause.
I wonder what technology's gonna allow you to put a cellphone in there.
I thought it was.
I think the old ones would have been this big, with the long antenna, and they'd flip.
Well, if it wants to donate an iPhone six.
They call it the bag phone or something.
Not mine, I don't have an iPhone six, but.
I don't know if we should throw a disc in the RCD disc, I don't know if that lasts, or I don't know what the lifetime.
Yeah, I could, maybe, um, if you have anything electronic that you wanna do, you know, like, uh, different articles or stuff like that, or minutes, you put a, put on a thumb drive.
We could do that.
Yeah.
Tom mentioned that.
A thumb drive, yeah.
Or something, he said something electronic.
Yeah, I mean, cause it's a thumb drive, though, I'm sure we can find a way to open it up, I think you do.
We could do that. Why do we put on? The pictures of the events, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Cause I got a lot of them from the fishing derby, we got a lot from the lawn party, and the water.
That's a, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if it opens, it opens, if not, well, well.
The digital camera, you put it, it uploads real quick onto the flash drive.
Well, we got a disc that's hard in, and we just copy that, throw that in.
I'm sure it's a disc in fifty years, where a thumb drive might still be, it'll something that they would.
It's the smaller space, too, doesn't it?
Exactly, it's all, you know.
Fifty years ago, they used Super eight movie cameras.
Yep.
Try to find one now to watch one of those films. I'm just, just think about what it might be like, fifty years.
Three markets.
They'll probably try to put the thumb drive on their thumb.
Yeah.
How did they do that?
There's nothing in there.
By that time, they'll probably just put it on a thing, and it'll just probably read it automatically, you know, or just some type of. Focus, focus.
We won't be here.
Do I open the suggestions?
I might be here, I'll be a hundred years older.
You don't need to lie a hundred, huh, I'm like.
Oh, that's why, but my kids have told me I'm too mean to die, so I probably will. If I do, I'll get twenty-five more years than I'm owed. So, I don't know, other than that, I mean, maybe, you know, pictures and stuff like that, I think that's not a bad idea, you know, different events.
Yeah, I put some pictures on a thumb drive, and the worst that happens is I can't open them.
Yep.
Okay, we'll go back to that.
Got anything else? I'll attend a motion to adjourn here, so. One second, I, all in favor? Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.